This regular meeting of the Detroit Lake City Council is called to order. And at this time, I'd like to invite all of you to please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held on September 14th, 2022. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Apparently now, we're going to be approving not only the consent agenda, but also the regular agenda. So I would entertain a motion, unless there's any changes, to approve the regular agenda as it's printed.
I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the regular agenda. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council that wishes to make any changes to the consent agenda as it's printed? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We have some special guests here this evening. Tom and Pam Mortensen would like to do two things. First of all, they've got a donation they'd like to make, and then they would also give us an update on wreaths across America. So Tom and Pam, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, and city staff, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. Once again, we're here to talk about helping our community, because that's one of the things that Pam and I really enjoy working with, the city staff on. And one of the projects that we just are donating the money to is Legacy Program, and I'd like to promote that a little more in the community. And what we're doing this time is we're donating two ADA compliant picnic tables to the Gar, Grand Army of the Republic Park, the one of three in the nation. So we'd like to do that there, because looking at the senior citizens in the area there, one of the things we've found is that when you have these type of capabilities for tables that are accessible for the disabled, it allows families to interact more with their family members. And because of the nursing home across the street and the two senior apartment buildings there, the Grand Army of the Republic Park is just prone for that, and veterans, of course, too, use that park. The other is the dog park. Pam has an affection for that, so do I, so we're putting one there as well, because a lot of senior citizens and disabled own dogs as well. So that's the project that we chose to donate the money towards, and we'd like to thank the city for coming up with this program and encourage other citizens in the community to think about their legacy. What can they do to help the community? We know that the city is strapped for finances, as all governments are, and you try to do the best you can with the dollars you do have, so it's time for some of us in the communities to step up and do more. And you'll find, Mayor, that in the spring, we've already talked with the city staff about looking at how we can make the Gar Park even more accessible, looking at maybe replacing some of the brick sidewalk over there with a regular sidewalk, so that wheelchairs and things like that can be, walkers can make it easier on that pathway there around the little park. But again, we want to encourage more. Wreaths Across America, well, you know, in December, you know, in prep for my polar plunge in February, we come up and we do the Wreaths Across America Project. That's going to be December 17th. We give you a little heads up on that. Wreaths Across America on the back of the pamphlet that you have has a new program also that if you know a veteran, they can put their dog tags on a tree where the bombs for the wreaths are actually grown over in Maine. They have a whole park that they dedicate to do that with, so if you pass on that information, that'd be helpful. And then in the center, you have something that we really need to do more recognition of, and that is our first responders. There's a National First Responder Day on October 28th, and I encourage you to, you know, get out and buy a cup of coffee for a first responder, or buy them a meal or something, because those of us, and somebody mentioned, Pam mentioned, one of the young ladies just came back from Clearwater. Clearwater was blessed with the storm, so were we in Tampa and that area. But if you've ever been in a situation where first responders have to respond to a natural disaster or hurricane, hats off to those people. I just wanted to say that. And again, Pam and I appreciate the opportunity to help the community do more, and we'll be back and do more.
Well, we appreciate all that you do. Thank you, and we have a very nice generous check here for $3,600, and I'll give that to Heidi, our finance person.
Thank you. Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to have John come up. If you would, John. We have a new firefighter.
Hey. Are you a firefighter?
Yeah.
A familiar face. So you've been on probation for a year?
I was, yeah. I'm off now.
You up in Hickel Lake?
Yeah.
Anyway, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Cervantes.
I, John Cervantes.
Promise that I will humbly serve.
Promise that I will humbly serve.
All customers.
All customers.
With an urgent response to the crisis.
With an urgent response to the crisis.
With compassion.
With compassion.
Sincerity and concern.
Sincerity and concern.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
Patience, kindness, and respect.
I promise that I will at all times.
I promise that I will at all times.
Conduct myself in a manner.
Conduct myself in a manner.
That reflects positively on the fire department.
That reflects positively on the fire department.
And the city of Detroit Lakes. Finally, I promise to follow the policies of the fire department.
Promise to follow the policies of the fire department.
To uphold the laws of our state.
To uphold the laws of our state.
Our nation.
Our nation.
And the ordinances of the city of Detroit Lakes.
And the ordinances of the city of Detroit Lakes.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
All right. Your official.
My wife, Shelley.
Hi, Shelley.
My youngest daughter, Macy, and my youngest son, Johnny.
All right. Welcome.
They will also serve my turn.
Okay, without objections by the council, I'd like to move to the library items, which is Finance Committee Items 7D and 7E. Chairman Zeman.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're going to give consideration accepting bids for the library bathroom remodel and awarding the contractor, Ledstone Incorporated. The original bid was $88,020, and then with some additional add-ons, this could be up to $100,000 for the overall repair. And at this time, we recommend that we'll go ahead and do this, but we're going to give Greta a chance to also speak on this little bit, because she's been working on this project for a lot of time, and she can tell us where these funds came to do this. So, Greta.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi. Thank you, council, for letting me speak tonight. Yeah, this bathroom project, I think, has preceded probably my time as library director. It became pretty evident when I stepped into this role that this was a need. It came out of our community needs assessment as overwhelmingly the top priority for our community. And then timing-wise, the donation that we received of $100,000 for that bathroom project kind of, everything has just fallen into place thus far. And so with these bids, I hope that you, you know, approve that we move forward with this, because it's really going to be a benefit to our community, I think. People that come into the library, people that are downtown, you know, it's nice to have these facilities available for downtown Detroit Lakes. And so, yeah, we have a good committee. Library Improvements Committee has been working on this with myself, so we've had a lot of good people look at this. And so I encourage you to vote your approval for this project.
Okay.
If you have any questions, though.
The committee recommends accepting bids for this project, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the bids for the library bathroom remodel and awarding contract to Ledstone Incorporated. Discussion? Any questions for Greta? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Then, Mayor, we also have a second item, Item 7E. This is consideration to approving the proposal from Trane for updating the pneumatic controls for the library, and we had a base price of Trane of $62,500, and we also have to do an option one valve control system to make sure those thermostats are working around the boiler. And so that'll be a total of $114,150. The committee recommends the approval of this, and I so move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the proposal from Trane for updating the pneumatic controls for the library. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thanks for coming, Greta.
Absolutely. Thank you all so very much.
Appreciate it.
I don't think there's anyone else here for anything specific, so we'll go back and I'll adjourn the regular meeting. Call to order a public hearing to consider proposed assessments for unpaid streetlight fees, water, sewer, and stormwater charges. And I don't think there's anyone in the audience, so, Kelsey, do you have any letters you've received, or? I got one email today that came from.
Mayor and council, we received one email from Brian, I don't know how to pronounce that.
Brian Langager.
Langager, just concerned about the notices.
The timing.
Timing of the notices that he received and.
So he's not protesting any of the charges or anything, right?
Right. He just would like to receive a notice about the unpaid charge earlier, but really the best way for those landlords, you know, before they release the deposit, they really should just check with us, make sure there's no unpaid utility bills, but.
Okay, so that public hearing is closed, and what are your wishes?
Okay, to give a consideration and resolution to adopting the assessment rule for unpaid streetlights, water, sewer, and stormwater charges, the committee recommends an ISO move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment rules for unpaid streetlights, water, sewer, and stormwater charges. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. At this time, I'll call to order a public hearing to consider proposed assessments for unpaid fire protection charges. And I don't think anyone's in the audience for that as well, so that public hearing is closed, unless you have any letters or anything you've received. Okay. What are your wishes?
Okay, with this consideration to a resolution adopting the assessment rule for unpaid fire protection charges for the year 2021 to 2022, the committee recommends this, an ISO move.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment rule for unpaid fire protection charges for the year 2021, 2022. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything else?
That's all, your honor.
Okay, we'll move to the Community Development Committee. Dan, do you think?
Light agenda, nothing.
Okay. We'll move to the Public Works Committee, and Chairman, or Chairwoman Sukie, whatever you prefer to be called.
Whatever is fine. Item A, consideration to authorizing additional design expenses related to Washington Park. I'm going to have Kelsey do a little bit of explaining on this.
Mayor and council, maybe just a quick update on the Washington Park project. As you know, we were hoping for a bonding bill approval, so we would receive some state funding to do that project. Bonding bill never came to fruition, so kind of this project's been on the back burner, just waiting for progress on that. So in kind of anticipation of starting over with the legislative session in January and a new bonding bill proposal, the committee's talked about updating our budget for the project, and part of that is the site improvements. We've, part of the project has always been improving the drainage down at Washington Park and looking at options versus doing grass infield or turf infield. And what you see in your packet is a proposal from Apex to do a little more survey work, grading plan, some more exploratory work for what the scope of that drainage system needs to be, and maybe what that cost estimate, kind of refine that cost estimate some more. So they're estimating between $7,000 to $8,000 to do that work. So really, the request here is authorizing Apex that additional budget to do some more professional services. In addition to that, we're continuing to work with the architect, too, to refine the budget numbers also for the grandstand, and the goal would be in December or January, come to the city council with whatever that new bonding bill request is going to be. We'll need a resolution from the city council to take that to the state. So hopefully by then, we'll, as you know, budgets and project costs have fluctuated a lot over the last 18 months, so we just really want to get a better handle of what our project costs are.
Okay.
Public Works reviewed this at our committee meeting yesterday, and we moved to authorize the additional design expense between $7,000 to $8,000. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to authorize additional design expenses related to the Washington Park project. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item B, Willow Street, Home Street, and Fraser Street improvements projects. There's a couple of items under that main heading. Item one, consideration to approve a funding contribution toward Willow Homes, Fraser Streets, special assessments. Some of you actually may recall when we were discussing what to do with those extra ARPA funds that we were awarded last year. Part of the discussion was to put funding toward the food pantry, part of it was toward funding some, buying down some of those special assessments on this project. And so there's been a placeholder for $450,000 for this particular contribution. The Public Works Committee moves to approve that funding contribution.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a funding contribution of $450,000 towards the Willow Homes, Fraser Streets, special assessments. Discussion on the motion.
Well, I'd just like to mention that on a 100-foot lot, the specials would have been $31,000, but with those ARPA funds, it brings those down to approximately $19,000. And on a 75-foot lot, it would have been $25,000 in assessment, but with the extra ARPA funds, it brings it down to $15,500, so it helps a lot of those homeowners in that area.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Item two, consideration to a resolution ordering the preparation of an assessment role for Willow Street, Home Street, and Fraser Street improvements for the year 2023, and setting a special assessment hearing for 5:00 PM November 7th. Our regular council meeting on the proposed assessments for said projects.
Okay, that's a motion?
That is a motion.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to adopt a resolution ordering the preparation of an assessment role for the Willow Street, Home Street, Fraser Street improvements for the year 2023, and setting a special assessment hearing for 5:00 PM November 7th, 2022, and the proposed assessments for said projects. Discussion?
I want to mention on this project for Willow, from M&amp;H down to Rossmann School, there's been quite a bit of talk about the work on that street, and I want people to know that our city engineer, John Pratt, is going to be working with Zaline Brothers to come up with a resolution on some of the items that people have questions on, and I just want people to know that, and something will come out of that, so I just wanted to bring that up.
And don't forget that our regular meeting in November is on Monday instead of Tuesday.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Point of clarification, I see Willow Street, Home Street, Fraser Street, but we also did the alley. But to my knowledge, we don't assess for the alley work. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
That was correct, right?
That was.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Madeline?
Item C, consideration to accepting the city engineers' monthly project status reports. Well, I'll call on John.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have plenty going on to consider, and it's October here, so run through some of the active projects, starting off with the Westlake Drive projects, Phase One, which would be Legion to Six. The contractor's doing, frankly, a pretty fantastic job with that. Progress has been really good. There's a lot of activity, if you've been through there, between what the contractor's working on, and then Public Utilities is working on relocating things, so there's just a ton of activity. But they are just about wrapped up, just about on the utility side, starting to pull down poles, cutting people over to the new underground. All the underground utilities are done, the new water transmission main, the stormwater collection's all done. So they're basically starting on road grading at this point, with curb and gutter scheduled to start kind of Monday, Tuesday of next week. So we're in a pretty good position. Obviously, the goal with the lateness of this project was to get curb and gutter and pavement back down, so we have a street to get us through the winter. But I do want to remind everybody, we will have some work to do outside the roadway with some of the stormwater treatment and the trail and things like that next spring, so we will have to do a closure earlier in the year, next year, to finish up that project. But so far, so good with that. Phase Two from Legion to County, or I'm sorry, from County Road Six to the Pelican River, also doing well. That's our local contractor of Hogue Incorporated. They've got all of the underground utilities done, sewer, water, stormwater's basically wrapped up. Lift stations operational, they're working on installing service laterals right now, but a nice way that they're sort of proceeding with the project is they're building some of the road as they make progress. So the southern half of the project has curb and gutter on it, has some trail, aggregate base of the gravels in, and they're actually talking about paving that yet this week, potentially even tomorrow. So, you know, they're starting to proceed with street work as they finish up the other portion, but I do expect that that project will take all of October. If we're blessed with a nice week in November, it might spill into that. If we get that, we may get it wrapped up. Otherwise, there'll be some minor work in the spring to finish. So for both of those, because I know that's on everybody's mind, when it's a nasty detour, we've got a month yet. I mean, we've got to the end of October, maybe even the early part of November, before we'll get those open back up. So nothing to report on the Bristland subdivision, Willow Homes and Fraser Street. We discussed that a little bit here earlier. It's open, thankfully, and the project's effectively substantially complete. There is some punch list work, minor things that they need to complete and correct. And then as Alderman Zeman indicated, we're working with the contractor on looking at the ride quality of some of that concrete, and a few spots is pretty rough, and so we're working with the contractor on a resolution for that. Highland Drive, that's a project that's being administered by Becker County, but they're moving along real nicely. I think they're talking about paving that probably next week, the way it sounds. I think all the aggregate base and the gradient's basically wrapped up, so they're getting close. I think in the next couple of weeks, that one will be done, and certainly by the end of the month or towards the end of the month, that should be back open for traffic. Long Pine Estates, all the underground utilities are complete, curb and gutter's in, aggregate base is down, and we are looking at paving on that as early as tomorrow, or at least certainly later this week. And so then that project will be wrapped up for the season and just some finish-up work in the spring. Becker County Museum, DLCC parking lot, that one unfortunately hasn't had any progress on it. Contractors have been elsewhere, there's been some delays related to demoing the old museum that have shifted everything back, and then, of course, unfortunately, contractors had planned to be in there earlier, they're tied up with other things at the moment, but there's still an intention there to get that museum down and get that parking lot constructed yet this year. Whether or not we get it completed in its entirety, I'm a little doubtful on that. Campbell and Linden, nothing to report. Summit Avenue, nothing to report. Both of those will be more action here over the next couple of months as we move ahead with design on those, and nothing to report on the Dandrew subdivision. So, questions?
Any questions for John? We should have probably a motion then.
Yep, it's coming.
Okay.
After hearing John's monthly status report, Public Works moves to accept that report.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the city engineers' monthly project status report. Discussion?
Well, I just want to say that the good news is it sounds like Westlake Drive is going to be paved if the weather holds, and that's the big news for all the residents out there, and for people that have been taking detours all summer, so.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Did we vote?
No.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Anything else? Madeline?
Nothing.
So, the Finance Committee, Chairman Zeman.
Okay, first item, Item 7A, consideration to accepting the Detroit Mount recreational annual financial statement and independent accountant's audit report for the year ending April 30, 2022. The committee reviewed this, and I so moved to accept that.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Detroit Mountain Recreation Area annual financial statements and the independent accountant's audit report. Discussion?
I just, Stu was here and gave a great report, and like all businesses, they're having hiring promotions out there right now for the winter season when it gets here, and they need a lot of workers, and it takes a lot of people to make that mountain go. So if you like working out there at the ski mountain and different things, and working around snow in winter, you know, start here immediately and go through until the snow's gone, but please go out and apply for work out there at the mountain, because they could certainly use your help, and it's a good place to work, and their big deal is like everybody else right now, is trying to find enough employees. So go out and apply for work if you would like to do that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, next item, 7B, consideration resolution awarding the sales of 2022 C Bonds. I'm going to turn this over to Heidi, and have her give us an update on that.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So earlier today, the city sold our 2022 C Bonds. First, I just want to tell you a little bit about our bond rating. So we had a bond rating from S&amp;P Global. They did rate the city as double A stable, which is the third highest possible rating. They gave us that rating due to excellent financial position, very strong management. They did note that we do have some high debt levels, but the debt that we do have will be paid off fairly quickly, and much of it is utility revenue-type debt, so that makes it a little less concerning. And then also noted that our economy is growing and continues to grow. So very good news there from S&amp;P Global. So we did sell the bonds this morning, 10:00 AM was the due date and time of bids. We received five bids, so good interest in our bonds. The bids are in front of you. I printed that out, since we didn't obviously have that in the packet, since we just sold them this morning. The true interest cost when we authorized the sale of bonds last month, we had estimated to be 3.94%. The actual, of the low bid was 3.96%, so we're extremely close to what we had projected. And the low bid is Raymond James and Associates. And so also at each of your stations should be a red line version of the resolution that was in the packet, along with additional information filled in from the sale earlier today, and then also a clean version of that same resolution, and that's what I would ask that you consider approving.
How did you?
So the original bond amount was set to be just over $7 million, but with a reoffering premium. I was going to leave that part off, because it gets a little bit confusing. The aggregate principal of the bonds is $6,915,000.
Okay, we should maybe get a motion.
Okay, the committee reviewed this, and we all agreed to go ahead and approve this, this bond for a 3.96% interest rate with an net amount of $6,915,000 ISO move.
Second?
Motion's been made seconded to approve a resolution awarding the sale of the 2022 C bonds. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, the, the next item, 7C, a consideration of accepting or rejecting the bids for the City Hall remodeling project. At this, at this time, we're, we're going to table this, and we're going to be having some more information coming in on the bid stakeholders, and we're going to have a meeting sometime between now and November 4th, so look at your computer, the office will be getting holdy, but we'll be having another meeting to discuss this, this project for the City Hall.
It'll be a special city council.
Special city council meeting, yes. Okay, the next item is D and E, which we've already done, and then it's down to F, this is a consideration to accepting quotes for insurance agent services and awarding the three-year contracts to Marcus and Bear Insurance Company. Heidi, would you like to review that with us, please?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, every few years, the city goes out for quotes for various, various items, including insurance agent services. The city is required to go through a licensed agent for our property and liability insurance coverage. We hadn't gone out for quotes in a few years, and so decided to do that this year. We received two quotes, one from Bell Insurance and one from Marcus and Bear Insurance. Marcus and Bear was the low quote at $3,500 per year. The city has worked with Marcus and Bear in the past, and we're comfortable with them, so we recommend moving forward with their quote.
Okay, the committee recommends that we go through with this ISO move.
Second?
Motion's been made seconded to accept the quote for insurance agent services from Marcus and Bear Insurance and awarding a three-year contract to Marcus and Bear. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
And then our final item is item G, consideration accepting the quotes for the audit services and awarding a three-year contract to Bergen KDB. They were the low betters for the three years, their, their total amount is $98,845 as compared to Brady and Marcus, who we've done with for years, their bid came in at $109,800, so the committee recommends to go ahead with Bergen KDB in the amount of $98,845.
Second? Motion's been made seconded to accept the quote for audit services and to award the three-year contract to Bergen KDB. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Public Sukie, I believe, right? Yep. Chairman Winner?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item in preparation for hiring a new fire department chief full-time. We need to make some changes to ordinance 498, and I'm just gonna, and then we are taking the opportunity to clean up some language with the police department too, and I'm just going to ask Kelsey to comment on this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, clarify, there's actually two changes. One's related to the fire department and one's related to the police department. So the fire department change is basically deletes the language that was in there about electing of the fire chief and bylaws and constitutions, and basically just replacing it with kind of what's standard language for our other departments. And then on the police department's side, there's this one change there that the current language identifies that the makeup of the department includes the chief and three sergeants, and then such other personnel is determined by the city council. The proposal's to delete the three sergeants. This was something that was recommended from the Police Civil Service Committee with the idea that as we have retirements coming up, maybe the, if the organization of the, of the police department changes, you know, it's from three sergeants to some other makeup, the council will then have the ability to do so without changing the ordinance again. So those are the changes to the administrative code. It is an ordinance, so it requires a reading tonight and reading next month.
Yep. And the Public Safety Committee reviewed this, recommended approval and ISO move.
Second?
Motion's been made seconded to give first reading of ordinance 498, which amends our administrative code regarding the fire chief election, also some matters with the police department. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and first reading of ordinance 498 is given.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Chief Swanson, do you want to give us a little report on the unfortunate event from yesterday?
It's just a long day, you know. We're actually, my phone's going out, I'm sure most of you heard that. We're setting the truck out, left five minutes ago to do another eight-hour shift out there, continuing to work over hotspots, that type of stuff, so Callaway Fire's been on scene all day. Not going to get into the details on that of why it's Callaway and not the other departments, but we have the next eight hours, and Frazee's taking over the next, or next eight hours after that. So, you know, it's very unfortunate, you know, most of, all of us have been out there. It's a very beautiful place and stuff like that, but you know, it's, it is the unfortunate when you want to, you know, build a house or build something in a, you know, secluded area. There's also consequences when the devastation day happens and, you know, water supply is an issue and, and drive times an issue and stuff like that. We, yeah, we were paced out 10 minutes to nine, and I think we pulled back in the town last night at 20 minutes after nine, so we were out there for 12 hours. You know, then obviously cleaning all the gear and stuff like that, so it was a long day. But, you know, the good thing is, is, you know, just no different than I'm sure with Chief Todd and his, his department, you know, we all work so well together with, you know, all the neighboring communities and stuff like that. I mean, you've got that many towns coming together and, and you see that things can just flow without any type of issues, it's, it's good to see that, you know, we're training together, we're working together and stuff like that. So when those bad days do happen, we can get the volume of numbers and trucks and stuff like that from the supporting hand. I, I did have to pull in some retirees yesterday just to be, you know, I called Chief Flynn up, and I said, are you ready to ret, come out of retirement? And he thought I was joking, and I was serious. I said, I have one firefighter and three rookies in town. If I get a call, I need somebody there. He's like, I got you. You know, so he ended up calling a bunch of other retirees, so we had a handful of retirees ready to report to calls to either run pumper trucks or do what they had to do, so even though we were all tied up with the amount of equipment we had, our city was still protected. So that's, you know, something very, you know, honorable that we have in our department, that our retirees are willing to come back and sample, figure, or phone call and still help all that needed.
Very good. Thanks for the report. Okay, we're down to the Liquor Gambling Control Committee.
Your Honor, everything on there was on the consent agenda, but I would like to point out the liquor store is looking for a night supervisor. Excuse me, that's already been closed. Okay?
We'll take part-time.
We're looking for part-time help there. So if anybody has some free hours, please go talk to Randy at the liquor store. That's all, Your Honor.
Very good. Anything to bring from the Public Utilities Commission?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Where are we at here? It's going fast tonight.
Oh, you know what? I should point something out.
Yes, go ahead.
There is, Public Utilities is involved in sponsoring an electric vehicle, EV event on Saturday from 10 until 2:00 in the parking lot at First Lutheran Church, and there's going to be a number of our community citizens that own electric vehicles that are going to have them there so that you can visit with them about their performance of the vehicle and that kind of thing. There are going to be three demonstration vehicles there that can, you can take for a ride or do a test drive. I don't know, Dan, are you going to have your pickup there?
Unfortunately, I'm not available. I've got another meeting to be on.
Oh, okay. We were hoping that Dan would be able to have his electric pickup there. It's pretty, that's a pretty cool thing. Paul Douglas, who is a meteorologist out of the cities, is going to be the keynote speaker. There are going to be electric bikes there to ride and try out. There's going to be electric yard equipment furnished by Swanson there for people to see, and there are also going to be some interesting things for kids there. So we invite the community to come out to that EV event.
Okay, thank you. I would like to recommend to the council that we appoint Marjorie Berg to the HRA board to fill the seat of resigned Reverend Ernie Mancini, and his term would have expired on October 5th, 2026, so if you approve it, Marjorie would serve out that term.
ISO move?
Second?
Motion's been made seconded to approve Marjorie Berg to the HRA board. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and thank you, Ron, for your work on that. Anything from the city staff, Kelsey, or any of the rest of the staff?
Just one announcement, I was going to mention, congratulations to the fire department for winning a splash award. I think they won the ripple award last Thursday at the Chamber of Commerce event, so congratulations to them.
Thank you. Some information, public discussion of the 2023 budget and tax levy pursuant to the truth in taxation requirements will take place at City Hall or somewhere designated as City Hall. On December 13th, 2022, at 6:01 PM. Also, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Fall Conference is November 17th and 18th at Arrowhead and Alexandria. If you're interested in attending, please let Carrie know. The Holiday Train is returning to Detroit Lakes this year, and it'll be here on Thursday, December 15th, at 2:30 PM. The November committee schedules are all going to be held on November 7th, Monday because of the election on Tuesday, and also the regular city council meeting will be on Monday evening, 5:00 PM. The balance of the city council dates for the rest of the year are noted as long, also for 2023, and the joint governance meetings are noted for 2023. And with that, anything else? Dan, anything to add?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jamie?
No.
Madeline? Matt?
One thing, Mayor, just to bring up is, is I know, as Mr. Zeeman noted earlier, I've gotten a lot of calls, there are a lot of discussion around that Willow project. I know Mr. Pratt's going to work with the engineer, but seeing they relate and ride quality is in question, anything we could do there would be greatly appreciated.
Madeline?
Nothing.
Ron?
Well, yes, I'd like to give congratulations to Dylan Ramstead. He just passed his bar exam. His grandpa, Jim Ramstead, who will soon be 100 years old, is very proud of him, as well as his mom, Karen Squirrels Ramstead, and his dad, Charlie Ramstead, and they're proud of him too, and we say congratulations, Dylan, and, and we might see more of him around town at, at one of these law offices. Congratulations.
You're almost going to have to buy wings now. Dan?
I've got nothing.
Okay, Wendy?
Nothing.
The business of this council has come to a conclusion.